I call the Wednesday, November 28, 2018 meeting of the Algonquin Municipal's School Committee to order. And the first item on the agenda is Action on the Minutes.
Will we approve the minutes from the open meeting of Wednesday, September 26, 2018?
Second.
Okay, motion by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any comments, corrections, anything? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Okay, next educational policy, we have none at this time. And the next item is new business, the School Improvement Plan. So we have a presentation.
We do.
Since we have the parting of the seas here.
Great, I'm just setting up, we have the opportunity to have our APTO with us. And just for some fun technology glitches, we're gonna load it back in. All right, Jackie, where are you? It's not there. Do you know where Kim put it, see? Here, we'll use my laptop. So we won't waste any time. Let me just step in there. And that way you have everything you need. That's okay, it happens. I'm not gonna use that.
All right. Good evening, I'm Jacqueline Reed Barnes and I am one of the chairs of the Algonquin Parent/Teacher Organization. Thank you for saving me, Sarah. And I want to thank you for allowing us to speak with you tonight, it's an honor and a privilege. And it's interesting that a lot of times I'm asked by parents, why is there an PTO at a high school? And I answer them that even though our children don't think they need us, they do. As high school students are facing tremendous amount of pressures these days. And it takes a village, parents, teachers. And having the opportunity to be part of the village, to be involved as parents, is essential. So I would like to take you on a little journey and just explain where we've been, where we are, and where we hope to go. And I challenge you to ponder that if you think you know the APTO, think again. First of all, I'd like to introduce our team. I'm one of the co-chairs and Julie Schrempf, who's our, my partner in crime and our resident songbird, is here tonight. We have an administrative coordinator, Carrie Prost, communications coordinator, Lisa Hodge, treasurer, Kimmy Savargian, and our junior post-prom party queen, Sue Disler. And before I tell you a little bit about our journey, I would like to just do a shout out to our former board members, transitioned out to other different things. And they are our legacy, they are our partners throughout the years. They have done amazing work and we thank them for their diligence and everything they've accomplished. We wouldn't be here today without all of their efforts over the years. So I'd like to thank Ellen Catalino, Tracy Kelleher, Valerie Bonaldo, John Clark, Mary O'Brien, Maureen Shaw, and everybody else who's gone before them. Over the years, we've accomplished a lot of things on our little journey. And one of the things that we're very proud of is awarding scholarships to deserving seniors annually. We've also partnered with Guidance and initially helping them with the College Fair, with the fund facilitation so that they can use those funds from the College Fair to generate activity and bring speakers in. We provided important communication, a newsletter on a regular basis when the technology and the opportunity wasn't there like it is today. And that was invaluable, that's how parents really knew what was going on. And we've also provided and supported some hospitality events such as faculty appreciation, breakfasts, and end of year teacher luncheons, and an ice cream social for everybody, including teachers and students on seniors' last day. The other activity that keeps us very busy is junior post-prom party, the JPP. And just one comment about that, the junior post-prom party has been going on for years, this is our 25th silver anniversary. I know, it's hard to believe that, isn't it? And it's an incredible event that keeps our kids supervised, safe, and substance-free as an alternative after prom. And they don't have to go to prom to actually go to the party. And I just wanna, one of the things that really strikes me about the post-prom parties is that it's a terrific opportunity to get the community together, everybody gets involved, businesses help support. And we have a person in charge who actually doesn't even have kids in the school anymore. So it's an example, just one of the things that we do where the community can really make a difference.
What kind of attendance do you get normally for that and where does it usually help?
I'm sorry?
What kind of attendance do you normally get for that?
We had about 320 kids and guests last year. So it's quite, it's quite popular, the kids love it, there's a lot of activities. And it's, you know, just one of the things that we try to provide throughout the year. And this takes a lot of effort, I have to say, but it's an amazing experience for the kids.
Is that the New Orleans Sports Center?
Thank you.
So one of the things that we were hoping to do is sort of tell you where we are today. After some of those activities that have become our traditions, we are looking at where we are and what we hope to accomplish. And historically, the APTO has received money from the parents, that's how we got our funding. It's strictly membership dues, people sign up for one, two, three years, or four years. No products, no gift wrap, or cookies. So we are moving from that philosophy to more of a sponsorship. We felt that it was more of a inclusive philosophy, a little bit softer in terms of the money that is being collected is for everybody. So it's not just affecting those who have, who pay dues, you know, their kids. It, what we do affects the school, hopefully, in a positive way. And the movement to sponsorship has been very positively received. We had about 106 members actually when we started. This year we're up to now 141 sponsors and we're still going. And regarding sponsorship, we have done something new this year where we had a sponsorship drive. And we set ourselves a goal, a very lofty goal, based on some of the prior experiences with our expenditures, wanting to have a cushion, and having some new initiatives. So we just said, you know what, if you look at the expenses and what we'd like, $10,000 this year. We're gonna throw it out there because of all the things that we could do and be secure in. And we're working on it, we're getting there, and it's an ongoing sponsorship program. And we're up there at about, hmm, about $2,000, $3,000, or $23,000 right now. So we're keeping the sponsorship going, but we've had a lot of positive responses to the program. One of the other things that we're doing right now and have been over the last year or two is really leveraging technology. We're doing all the Google things, we're doing all the Doodle things, we're doing PayPal online processing and payment processing, taking advantage of everything that we can in today's technology for logistics, but also for communications. We have just established a Facebook page, we're getting out there on social media. We have a terrific webpage, we've already did that. Thanks to Lisa, we're really rolling and doing some positive things in that area. And we're even looking at doing web-based communication and conferencing. Another thing that we're focusing on is keeping the T in APTO. And we had a great opportunity this year to actually attend a faculty meeting as one of the agenda items. And we talked about two things, one, we sort of kicked around the idea of having a fundraiser, a grant fund for teachers and faculty. Working on that, we're trying to figure out how that works amongst all the other grants and opportunities that there are out there without impacting that. But certainly an opportunity there. And we did a first-time faculty feedback, which is awesome. So that was a really, really strong step in the right direction. Another thing we've been really working on in the last year or two is ongoing collaboration with school speakers and establishing parent nights. We've had two amazing speakers over the last couple of years, Kevin Brooks, Kevin Wanzar. And they've actually spoken to the school, the students, and amazing response to that. But we've also established parent meetings so they can hear what the kids are hearing separately. You know, they hear different, you know, it's a different dynamic. But it opens up the dialogue, dinner table talk. It's a great opportunity for parents to see what's going on and to talk about these things that are so important today. And by the way, you don't have to be Kevin, unnamed Kevin, to speak at our school. But we're looking to do more of that. And we're finally, we're in a mode of trying to define who we are, kind of like our kids, you know, we're sort of in that stage. We've been transitioning with administration, with a whole new leadership team for the APTO. It's a great opportunity to figure out where we want to go and who we want to be. And by the way, one piece of that is we're evaluating our bylaws, dusting them off, and then seeing if they still make sense. Oh, sorry. Okay. Looks like one of the pages just, goodness, sorry about that. Actually, Julie, would you do me a favor, I forgot we have a handout. And this one screen seems to be missing here. If everybody would like to take a copy, this is basically what we're doing today. So I apologize for that, I think one of them is hidden in this. So on the back of this page is the, it's a presentation, by the way. And for the next stops, at the bottom of the back of the cover, what's important to us is maintaining our, for the next stops that we're looking to do in the immediate, we are very focused on our 501(c) status because it's very important to us.
Thank you.
And it's a tisso season, I would say, that not Santa or reindeer, but tax season for us. And it's all good, it's a very important for us and a great opportunity to take advantage of a 501(c)(3). And then the next thing that we'll be working on is the JPP, 25th preparation. We have a scholarship coming up in January, which is something that we're looking at evaluating, expanding possibly. And we have two speakers, Dr. Ruth Potte and Lisa Connery. And they are already scheduled, so we are adding them to our speaker opportunities this year. And finally, we are looking at creative opportunities for additional fundraising beyond just the sponsorship. And hot off the press today, thanks to our help over here, Julie, has done an amazing job getting, associated with MULA. And we are establishing on December 20th, an APTO night from 5 to 9. And we just literally finalized that today, so that's really exciting. And we're gonna look, by the way, at more opportunities for that, for fundraising outside of the usual. So finally, we hope that we can reach out to our community, to our village, to our parents, faculty administration, our district, our school committee, and our students, to look for direction and what the next fork in the road is going to be. Because we're at that fork now, and there are lots of different ways we can go. And we need all the feedback we can get from our village. So we thank you for the opportunity and open this up to any questions you may have for the APTO. Any questions?
First thanks for your presentation, just a very quick question. So you used to do membership and collect money from parents as some sort of a dues thing, and now you're going to something you call sponsorship? Can you give me a quick rundown on what the difference is between those two things?
Well, that's a very good question because we're sort of working those questions out as we go along. We're changing the terminology, it's a semantics term initially. But what we're looking at doing is instead of having a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, we're, a couple of things we've talked about, we're breaking it up into sponsorship levels, if you will, sort of silver, gold, bronze, platinum. We've kept the same amounts, it really is a transition, if you will. We've kept the same amounts, 30, 50, 75, 100. But we're looking, we're opening that up, we're allowing for different amounts. We're, instead of limiting it to like a year, so you sign up for four years and you're done, we're refreshing the opportunity to contribute. One year maybe you can contribute, one year maybe you can't, maybe you did 100 and then sort of forgot about it. And now, as a, having a student who's maybe just a freshman and you're just doing one year at a time. This is opening it all up and...
More than just parents as well.
I'm sorry?
More than just parents as well, anyone who supports our mission, we will gladly accept your money.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, it gives them, people flexibility if they want to contribute and maybe they don't want those limits. Maybe it's, they can't necessarily afford those limits. The other opportunity is to, sort of a renewal option, an automatic renewal. We're looking at different things, so we're taking it one step at a time.
And do you accentuate the 501(c)(3) status? A lot of corporations, you know, as you know, will match sometimes one-for-one, two-for-one, you know, a donation, you know, to the organization.
Well, one of the, one of the things we've looked at, the 501(c), why we need the 501(c) is because of the JPP. We have a lot of businesses that contribute to that. So they do donate based on that. We have, that's a very good question, we should probably look at the matching. It allows us to do some saving within the state for certain expenditures, allows us to go to, say, Wal, you know, Wal, actually save some money if we're purchasing items in that vein, you know, from...
Definitely writing that down, looking to match them, yes.
It is a bonus.
But it's allowed us to do things like MULA, MUA, and other opportunities that our businesses locally like to share with the community and help us, so 501(c) really helps. Joan, did you have some question?
Thank you. Jacqueline and Julie, thank you very much for your time and effort and all the time that you volunteer for this position. And I know it's, sometimes it's easier being PTO at the elementary level when the parents and the kids are first involved in schools, but when you get later, there's so much more that they're involved in. I only had one question, you talked about that you had two speakers already and that you have two more coming up, Dr. Potte and Lisa Connery. What are the topics, especially for the two maybe coming in, what are they gonna be speaking about?
Dr. Potte is substance abuse or use or control. And Lisa Connery is the head of guidance for the school and she goes over the course selection process.
And if I'm not mistaken, Ruth Potte's going to be a student parent, is that a combined evening?
So I don't know if it's gonna be combined, but students are obviously welcome to come. Dr. Potte has spoken at some of our local high schools around Algonquin and she was highly recommended by quite a few of our parent and community members to come to Algonquin. She focuses, as you said, on substance abuse, raising awareness and what it can lead to, and just really empowers our parents in understanding what our students are potentially getting into and some of their risky behaviors. So students and parents are welcome to the same presentation. I don't think Dr. Potte's during the day, though, like Kevin was.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that clarified.
And Kevin Brooks was last year.
Yeah, Kevin Brooks was last year.
Kevin Wanzar was this year.
And what did the former talk about, Kevin Brooks and then Kevin Wanzar?
Kevin Brooks was about making safe choices with alcohol and driving and stuff like that.
He had a, yeah, that's true.
And Kevin Wanzar was choose to love, it's anti-bullying, and he, the school brought him in to work with on their Day for Change. And so we piggybacked with that opportunity in the presentation.
So both the speakers aligned with school, Kevin Brooks we aligned with the JPP.
Right.
And right before senior, the junior and senior dances, intentionally.
How's the talk to the classes?
Yep.
Thank you, very worthwhile connection, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and giving us that presentation on what you're doing these days. And interested to hear about the changes that, you know, you're undergoing. I know, as Joan said, it is kind of, as the kids get older, it gets, you're, it's more of a lonelier existence in terms of running the APTO, so I appreciate your, all your efforts.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So I also want to say thank you to the APTO, they've been really exciting and very supportive to work with. So from that presentation, we move on to Algonquin School Improvement Plan. Let me go ahead and bring that up. Came up nicely. Before I jump into the work, I just wanted to make sure to recognize our school council who's here. Thank you for your support, appreciate it, out there with our audience members. One of our, our student rep could not make it tonight, since this was postponed a month, I think he was participating in our winter sports tryouts. But Jason's here in spirit, so thank you to all of our school council members. Thank you to some of our parents whose students have graduated and who have remained with us as our community representatives. Thank you to our school-based leadership team, there's a lot of cross-collaboration between school council and our school-based leadership team to really push our school improvement plan forward. Thank you to Central Office and Superintendent Johnson, she provided some key instrumental feedback to the process to help streamline our work. And although they're not here, thank you to Principal Valenti and retired Principal Witten because I researched them out on Northborough, Southborough cable access and watched their school improvement plan process, just kind of stole some of their best practices and put it into place. So on this slide, I just present our district mission values along with our ARHS core values. These obviously align to our Vision 2020 strategic plan. I'm not one for reading off the slides, so I will add to the information on the slide. Something that I'm really proud about that school council and SBLT did was align a lot of the work to our three major expectations, academic, social, and civic. Our academic expectations really speak to children, being able to write and speak effectively and efficiently, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. Those communication, those strong communication skills are vital to be globally competitive. The push to analyze, be able to interpret and evaluate different forms of data and information. You'll see that push happen in Algonquin Writing Center and across some of the work we're doing and some of our other academics. Use technology constructively, be able to create, be innovative with the work and then apply the work. You hear a lot about the innovative strategies through the principal reports that I present each month. So exciting work and something that we've captured in our SIP. For our social expectations, we're in high school now, we want to empower our children to take responsibility for their actions, accept their peers, you know, diversity awareness, some of the information presented by our APTO and the speakers that we brought in to support that. And also to collaborate, being able to forge those positive connections and work together in groups, individually, to be successful again both in and out of the classroom. And our last one is our civic expectation. We want to embrace and empower and educate our children to respect our differences, to use our differences to grow each other both individually and as a group towards a common goal, to participate and contribute to their local, state, national, global communities. This work really overlaps some of the great work on the updated social studies standards, which links back to our academics. So you'll see this thematically throughout the rest of the school improvement plan presentation. Before we go on to the presentation of the new school improvement plan, we want to see where we were. So you're gonna hear me present out our previous school improvement plan, which was 2016 to 18, last academic year. The plan was started under Principal Mead, his last year here was the first year of the goal, the plan. And then the second year of the plan was my first year here at Algonquin last year. The plan had five separate goals and 30 action steps. And the goals ranged from, you know, supporting a learning environment, social emotional awareness, incorporating our community for supports, professional development for teachers, and then how to continue to grow those networks for our students. 30 action steps is a lot of action steps, and you're gonna see some overlap. And what we learned from this process is that we want to take those 30 action steps and streamline our work and make it easier for our parents to understand what our goals are in the classroom and to support us in that work. So with our previous plan, I'll go over the five goals. Again, there are 30 action steps, there's a lot of different accolades and accomplishments... There was a lot of different accolades and accomplishments that I could speak to. I'll highlight some of them. So this this is one of two slides. On the first slide, which goal one spoke specifically to supporting a positive learning environment and creating high academic expectations. This was done by creating numerous opportunities for our students to actively participate within their school, kind of their civic and social expectations along with their academic expectations. And this ranged from creating new clubs. We talked about the B Club last year, although there was a delay on the Bs. It's up and running right now. Expanded competitions, speech and debate has more competitions that they're participating in. Our robotics team I speak about often. Deca continues to be exceptional in their performance and grow. They now run a Deca Entrepreneurial Night, which is going to be in January where our community members come in and we have student speakers. Science Olympiad, you'll hear me speak later on in our principal report. The Harbingers won another award. All of these are different opportunities for our students to shine and demonstrate their performance, but also challenge themselves both in and out of the classroom. One of the other action steps was to establish a writing center. So the Algonquin Writing Center is established. It's connected right next door to the Algonquin, to the library. Definitely stop by and visit. It is open multiple times throughout the day. It's open after school. We have restructured some of our duty schedule last year to support it happening during the day. So when we had student peer-to-peer mentorship and class trainings, we could have a faculty member in there. It was started with two key faculty members. We've integrated additional faculty members to kind of expand it, both within the English department and outside of the English department. Canvas, Learning Management System. One of the action steps in it was figure out which learning management system works and implement it. Super huge kudos to Julie and Andy and T J and Brian and their work and all of our educators, our D L Ls, on taking Canvas, adopting it and implementing it with all of our teachers. So now at Algonquin, one hundred percent of our teachers use Canvas daily. They update grades, they create announcements for students, they create announcements for parents, they communicate assignments, they post rubrics. And it allows it to have that one-stop shopping for our students, which supports the high academic expectations, which was a part of goal one. Career Day to continue to expand that work. So when this started, there was a career day through science run by the department chair, Lori Zanini. And then there was a career day put on by guidance, run by Lisa Connery and the guidance team. And it was involving one or two departments. And the goal is to continue to expand how many outside community presenters we brought into the school to work with our students and how many departments were involved. Now, all four core departments are involved and as of this year, going forward into a new SIP, all of our departments want to be involved. It's expanded so much so that we've talked about maybe alternating years to balance so that students can hear different community members in different fields over a two-year cycle. We had over eighty-five different community members come in on the career day and speak to our students throughout the whole day. That's parents that work locally, that's local community members, that's entrepreneurs, that's some of our Deca team members, all coming to work with our kids, helping them to understand, here are your high academic achievements, here's how to apply them outside of the classroom. And obviously, there's no more ranking. So there was a push to remove ranking from Algonquin, which has occurred. And we continue to look at updating our grading scheme and helping support our college prep students greater access to colleges and additional courses. Goal two, focus mostly on the social emotional supports in our previous SIP. So increase the opportunity for students to get involved in wellness programs. So what does that mean? We brought in North Borough and South Borough Family Services to host teen classes here in the school. So you don't have to go anywhere. As a student, you could sign up for the classes and then go to them after school. And they could be stress management, it could be time management, risk factors that you had questions about. They produce a schedule and students can go ahead and sign up for it and we share it with the students. There's also Kids on the Block has continued, peer-to-peer mentoring in freshman orientation, in the Algonquin Writing Center, within our classes, in athletics with athletic council. So that has expanded the opportunity for students to have positive connections. We've continued to advance our anti-bullying supports. There's now an online anonymous reporting option that goes through the assistant superintendent Martino, vetted through him, comes to the high school so we can take appropriate action steps, facilitates the process of reporting it and getting it to administration's attention. In addition to creating things like Day for Change and Break Free from Depression, awareness that there's different types of students and needs out there and accepting accepting those differences. We've also made sure to include our Metro West data, so I've skipped one. The importance of using some of the SIP goals was to really focus on data and driving your wraparound services from the data. So for example, the Metro West Health Survey data points out how many students report that they're stressed, how many students report that they feel bullied or participate in risky behaviors. And what we do is we pull from that data and then gear specific intentional workshops, which guidance does phenomenal work on and they do individualized workshops. So for example, you heard me say Break Free from Depression. That is a freshman workshop that's going on this week where guidance will push into classes and educate students about what it means to be depression, to be depressed, how to, you know, get resources for yourself if you notice it in a peer, what to do about it, and just giving them the opportunity to be involved in wellness program access and additional resources. Another really successful action step of the thirty action step was our transition programs. We focused on two in the SIP process, the first one being access. Access is a transitional program where we wanted to decrease the amount of time that students were having homeschool tutoring and getting them back in the school. And a student may need this, for example, if they experienced a concussion. And then transitioning from being at home to a full day of school was too much. So the access program is a quieter setting, there's a tutor in there. Guidance works really close with the tutor to bring the work in and help catch the student up to make sure that they don't fall too far behind as they work their way back in the classroom. Rise is our emotional, our social emotional support program. Phenomenal work done by Maria Allen and Student Support Services in creating a wraparound service for our students who, for social emotional reasons, aren't yet ready to access academics in a regular setting. And so depending on the setting, they could push into Rise and then pull back out. And the goal is to give the students the skills so that by their fourth year or as they progress to high school, that they don't necessarily need to be in a Rise classroom, but they know and have those skills and how to function if a situation might be overwhelming, if they're having a bout of anxiety. So these things have been established and come to fruition under our old SIP or our previous SIP. This slide is the other three goals of the five goals and the thirty action steps. Goal three focuses primarily on diversity and inclusion. So we heard you speak a little bit about expanding Career Day, awareness to students on what's accessible and available for them to participate in. Expanding recognition and positive accolades for our students was one of our action steps. We have eighteen National Honor Societies here at the school and we hold inductions for most of them. It's a lot, but students have earned it and they deserve that awareness and that recognition. We do scholarship luncheons breakfast, they do book awards, senior scholarship night. All of these things to do different moments of excellence for our students and really make them feel appreciated for the hard work that they do. One of the action steps was develop, create and implement, implement and sustain a unified sports program. We started out with Unified Track and a co-op of Unified Track, a co-op between Westboro and us, and then Unified Basketball. The program has grown so much that this will be the first year that we do not co-op with Westboro for our track. Both teams now are sustainable on their own. And our Unified Sports was nationally recognized as a banner school on their exceptional work in, you know, what they do in the classroom, in inclusivity and understanding and supportive students, as well as the Unified Athletics Program. In addition to that, we've made sure to establish the foundations to support our Rise program through wraparound services and giving our educators the professional development and resources that they need. So for example, last year, my first year here at Algonquin, we established a daily Rise Professional Learning Community, P L C, in which we would have an outside consultant come with them, meet with them monthly, or we would have Ms. Allen come in and meet with them on how to best meet some of our social emotional student needs. That's continued into this year, bless you, where we have new students and we have new faculty members involved. And the goal is to have our professionals come around the table and discuss what best strategies could we use to help each one of our social emotional students advance out of the Rise program to be successful in a traditional classroom. And so that work has continued. Our athletics are, one of the action steps was to increase athletic opportunities, participation. Our enrollments have continued to increase. We heard from our previous A D Whitten, each one of the seasons last year on the positives in athletics. And we've continued to hear that under A D Masarino this year. And for increased social opportunities, we have brought back every dance possible at Algonquin. The Winter Ball was a huge success. Our senior, our senior ball was a great success, our junior prom. There was a good push for freshman dance. We almost pulled it off. We're going to go for it again. Sophomores have an exceptional dance. It's just creating those opportunities for students to be around peers and make positive choices and positive connections and networks to the school. And that was done through dances, it's done through honor societies. It's done through some of our clubs, our new clubs and opportunities. So part of the action step was to continue to foster that and bring those traditions back into place, which we have, which is extremely exciting. And the goal overlaps some of the previous goals where it goes back to talk about access and says it needs to be fully implemented. It now is fully implemented. Ms. McNulty works closely with students in access along with the tutors to make sure that the students get what they need. Goal four, focus primarily on professional development. It talked a lot about making sure that our teachers were S E I endorsed. And thank you to Greg and Rhoda on bringing those opportunities to Algonquin, supporting our teachers in the retail process, supporting them access to becoming S E I endorsed. We, as of last year, had developed a professional learning community in every single one of our departments. P E and Health, Applied Arts, Math, Science, English, History, all of them. Some departments have more than one P L C and meet more than once per week. Sometimes they meet once a week. But the goal was to create the opportunity during the day where professionals could sit down, they could look at the curriculum. How can we improve this? What best instructional strategy do you have? What do you do in your classroom that I could do in my classroom? How best could we meet that student's needs? To other things like looking at common assessments, analyzing student standard and content mastery and what to do with that next. So it varies on how each P L C is run within departments because the content varies. But we find it important in order for our peers to be lifelong learners is that we create that space during the day for that to happen. That work continued into the current SIP. One of the goals was to successfully complete our N I S C five-year report. That was reported out earlier on in this year. We received multiple accolades from N I S C, one of them being the P L C work that we've done. We've also had a push in this school improvement plan to create leadership opportunities for our educators. So something that's really exciting and fun about Algonquin is we have multiple committees and they're led by students and educators and parents. We have a homework committee, we have a scheduling committee, we have a wellness committee, labor management survey committee. These are all different teachers that run these different committees and they look at different aspects of the school and how to improve them. It's a multi-layered, multi-tiered approach and it helps create leadership and build depth across our leadership skills while also improving school-wide performance for students. And our final goal out of the five goals was goal five, and that was focus more on community support. And so as you heard me say previously, we had over eighty-five parents and local community members come in and present at the Career Day. We had over fifty different scholarships at our senior scholarship night, which equated to over a hundred thousand dollars in monies provided to our students, which is a true testament to how we've increased those community connections. It also facilitates creating a positive network for internships, for our students to have summer work, for students to understand how to take their skills within the classroom and apply them outside of the classroom. It allows us as a school to create positive connections with local businesses to come into our classroom and be guest speakers and answer our students' questions face to face. And another push for this goal was to increase community supports through awards and grants. N E F, S E F, Corridor Nine, North Borough, South Borough Music Association, A P T O, as you heard Jackie say, are all willing to support the school through various awards, various grant monies, needs in order to make sure that our students and educators' needs are met. So that's a lot. Five goals, thirty action steps, some of them overlap. We needed to understand at school council, where were we on all of these goals and where did we want to go? So this next page is supposed to look a little messy. And it makes sense if you were in the process. So on the left side of the screen was our first go around. I had the opportunity to meet with school council and they were very clear in their push of not all of us are in the school. So some of these things we really can't answer. We're going to need to know where you guys made it through your own self-reflection on your goals. And then we can provide that outside feedback and push. So what we did is we went back to the school-based leadership team, S B L T, the department chairs, administration, library support. We broke up into a north, south, east, west, team-based subgroup and we evaluated each one of the thirty action steps. Where are we? Is this fully implemented? Is it a part of our normally normal daily business? Is it something we need to revisit? Is it something that's completed and we moved on? And you'll see different forms of feedback. It makes sense to each group and how they gave the feedback. That work was brought to school council. They provided feedback and questions, pushes, wanted more explanations, came back to S B L T and said, okay, here we are. This is some of the feedback and pushes we got from school council. What do we think as leaders in the school and what do your departments think? How would they implement this? And what we realized is some of this work was overlapping and some of it was our norm. So you're going to start seeing a shrink down from five goals and thirty action steps and start streamlining the work to less goals and fewer action steps, for more powerful forward steps. And so although it looks a little messy here, the whole purpose was to make sure that we really felt confident that this action step is a part of our daily norms and traditions at Algonquin. This action step has been completed, this action step needs a further push. And that's what you'll see happen as we develop and go into our new school improvement plan. So for our new school improvement plan, we wanted to empower what was going on within our classrooms right now and the work that had been our foundations for our next steps. And what resulted from this was three goals and eleven action steps. So you see me now transition from the work that principal Mead started to my second year, my first year here and the second year of the SIP, to now this current year. In our first goal, we overlapped some of our previous school improvement plan work, but we're still focusing on that learning environment. It's still extremely important to create a safe learning environment where you create the opportunity for student achievement and you create the opportunity for students to develop their skills and practice applying them both within and outside of the classroom. So now that we've established an Algonquin Writing Center, one of our action steps is so what next? And some of the great work that Ms. Stein has done and Mr. Zarneki has done is they've expanded the number of tutors that they have. They now have their peer tutors going and presenting at other writing workshops. They were just down at one in D C where they're they're presenting their work, they're getting feedback on their work, they're expanding their work so they can bring that back to Algonquin and improve how they do their tutoring. They're running workshops. They, it's in the principal report for this month. They ran a workshop connected with guidance on how not to procrastinate your college essay writing anymore. That was great for some of our students who really kind of needed a refreshing look. Sit down with a peer, give me an idea, what do you think of this? So it's taken the Algonquin Writing Center and it's taking it beyond the walls of Algonquin, beyond the classroom. But what next for our faculty members? So that's happening at the student level. How else can we expand writing? Remember, it's part of our three expectations under academic expectation, writing across the curriculum. So this started in its infancy last year at Algonquin and it has grown. Writing across the curriculum started with a few faculty members who wanted to look at how we could effectively improve our writing skills in multiple content areas, not just looking at it through the English lens. This has grown to now have multiple members from various departments meeting as a professional learning community during the day. They meet minimally once a month, if not more. They're also using their professional development flexible hours to continue this work. And they're devising a three-year rollout on how to have writing across the curriculum established in Algonquin. Very clear action step, links to creating that learning environment. Our second action step, I'm on the wrong page, focuses on how to expand our community resources and our Career Day and how to establish those community classroom connections. Again, that facilitates our students to have a positive network around them, to see if they're interested in something, if they want to try or experience something, they will feel comfortable approaching. They will feel comfortable approaching that community member or that business. And teachers will feel more comfortable, having had that speaker in the classroom, to inviting them back to answer questions. This has expanded so much so that now every single department at Algonquin is going to participate in our community career day. We are trying to link it up with, um, our no homework night so that it follows the next day to make sure that students don't have any pressures, any concerns about what is going on in the classroom. They can just focus on the community member coming in. We had eighty-five members last year. It's going to expand obviously into this year because the increased number of department, departments involved. And like we said, we're now gonna have to do this two-year tiered approach because it's continued to expand. Along with that, we have, um, in our CRC, Ms. Cummings, who developed, um, an internship program in her previous location. She has come back to Algonquin. She was a graduate. In her previous school, she worked at a charter school and developed, uh, an internship program. She's helping to put some of those fundamental key, um, steps in place for this action step on how do we grow our internship program and how do we grow our internship opportunities? Our third action step for our learning environment, um, is to look at our current bell schedule. This was something that was brought up last year, at the end of last year. And how do we use our learning time and what do we do with it? And how does our bell schedule impact both our academics and our social emotional wellness? We leveraged our previous SIP in which we have our educators leading this process. We have a bell scheduling committee. We have someone from every single department represented on that committee. We are going to practice two pilot weeks on some tentative bell schedules. We're gonna get feedback from educators and students on that process. We've devised something called a step block. It's a student-teacher enrichment period in which students can either focus on wellness, they can get involved in a positive connection with a faculty member, or they could take an additional study if it happens before midterms or finals or AP exams to bring down that stress level and increase our resource for both the student and teacher to have additional, um, support services for the student. And our fourth and final action step for goal one is now that we have Canvas in place, what then can we do with it? This is bring your own device. We wanna continue to build on the opportunity of creating individualized learning, leveraging online learning, communication, um, having students be globally competitive because they have the familiarity with their device. They, um, there's less time lost on learning because students aren't logging in and out of different devices. We have rolled this out. It has been a successful rollout. We're still in the process, a couple of little bumps along the way. But what's great is it's allowed us to reflect, come back together. Julie Doyle's been fantastic. Brian Callen's been fantastic. Great infrastructure upgrades on this. Thank you to Greg and, and the IT team support. But that is an action step on how we can take now our Canvas and leverage bringing your own device to a whole new level on meeting individual student, um, needs, instructional practice improvement, online learning, advanced course learning. It's endless. All of this links back to our strategic plan. So at the bottom of each one of the goals, you'll see me reference where we overlap our Vision 2020. It's really important that we stay streamlined in our work. Our second goal also has four action steps. This goal focused primarily on social emotional growth. This does overlap some of our previous SIP goals, but now tries to condense it in a more, um, streamlined fashion so that our action steps can really align with the work that's going on in the school and meets the needs of our students both within and outside of the school. Our first action step was to, um, make sure we're taking the data that's available to us and applying it. So you heard me speak briefly about the Metro West Health Survey data. We look at, um, achievement scores, standard scores, how we're doing on performances, social emotional trends, some of our needs of our students. You heard our APTO speak about some of the speakers that they've brought in to meet some of these social emotional trends. That's grounded in how many of our students are reporting X. They receive this intervention, they receive this workshop. Now how many of our students are reporting X? Did we grow? What could we do differently? How could we improve this practice? And so we've got a great system in place that we kind of do a pre-post test. And then we've got that larger surveying on the Metro West Health Survey data. Our second action step is, some of you may have heard of this previously. Trotter does this. They do connections where they literally put up all of the students' names and then teachers go around and they put a circle dot next to the student if they know the student and they have a connection with the student. For Algonquin, you know, almost fifteen hundred students, a little difficult. So we did a kind of online and we did a metaphorical dot of connections where we created a shared Google Doc and each teacher went in and said, yes, I have a connection with Johnny Smith. I know, you know, so-and-so from sports. They do the play, I do the play. We talk about the same things. What we realized in this work though is that we all defined connecting with an adolescent and with a peer differently. So although we wanted to move forward in connections and improve our social emotional growth of our students, we needed to have a common understanding on what it meant to have connections with peers, connections with students, and the skill set to grow it. So we stepped back this year and we've created a connections professional development team. It's a committee run by teachers. They have created professional development throughout the year where they leverage various professional development days, faculty meetings after school, in which we are learning how to make positive connections with each other, developing that skill set and modeling it with each other so that we can then model for our students and then develop it with our students. We all know that one of the successful forty attributes of a student to decrease participating with the activities is to having a positive connection with a school or community member. So that is a focus of our action step under growing social emotional growth. The third action step, um, is for us to leverage how to create healthy boundaries around technology. So we all are aware of the research and how students cannot live without their phones. And there's Insta and Finsta and social this and Facebook that. They don't even Facebook anymore. I think it's more Finsta and Insta. But how do we empower our students? One, to navigate the constant digital stream of information. Is it authentic and what do you do with it? But also how to present yourself and have a conversation, an appropriate conversation, create respectful boundaries. Something that we spoke about in school council is that we haven't seen very many school improvement plans that talk about this. Yet it's very relevant to our student needs and our times. And so we're looking at different ways to become more, um, digitally sound in our actions, how we leverage the internet both academically and socially, and then creating those appropriate boundaries. And our final action step of social emotional growth focuses on how do we continuously improve our community connections and our mental health, um, uh, supports? This takes many different, um, steps. The school assistance team does phenomenal work. They meet once a week on Fridays for all of the guidance counselors, the adjustment counselors, the school nurses, school resource officer, administration. If we need a special advisor or guest, come together. And we talk about what are some mental health resources that we could get? You know, what does so-and-so need and what do we have to offer? What are some, um, behavioral interventions that we could get for the family that we could do in the school? What are some resources? And we streamline that approach so that both the school and the home are able to work together to support, to support the student, um, concurrently towards a successful social emotional growth trajectory. Again, on the bottom, it's how it aligns with the strategic plan indicators for Vision 2020 to make sure that all of our work goes back to our, um, district mission and vision. And then here is our final goal. It's our third goal. There's three goals in comparison to five goals. And this one, similar to our previous school improvement plan, talks about professional development. We as educators need to be lifelong learners because it is our job to consistently improve our instructional skill set because that will improve our students' achievement and performance as well as their social emotional growth and awareness. So we've come about this three different ways. The first one is our first action step, which is instructional rounds. And, you know, thank you to Greg and Christine for bringing this to us. Our goal is to effectively and a hundred percent efficiently participate in the implementation of instructional rounds in which we develop an inquiry-based question at Algonquin on how to move us forward on something that we sees a necessary need right now in helping us grow as a school. It also helps our leadership team grow. So for example, fifty percent of our leadership team went to visit a school yesterday. And we work with the school in observing classrooms and investigating their inquiry-based question and how to help them grow. That helps us develop our lens and understanding of what's going on outside of our school and bring that analytical and evaluative approach back into the work we do here at Algonquin. The other fifty percent of our leadership team will go on an instructional rounds, instructional rounds visit tomorrow so that by the end of the week, a hundred percent of us will have participated in it. We also have the opportunity to host our peers in the other ten schools and central office within Algonquin. We will present our own instructional-based inquiry question that we will develop from our own faculty and have others evaluate and learn and grow on how we can improve our instructional practices here at Algonquin. So action step one of professional development, lifelong learning. Action step two is to continue to focus on professional development for differentiation of instruction, specifically looking at the needs of our student supports for differentiation, uh, for special education students and the needs of our Ls, which you've heard Rhonda speak about and, um, Marie speak about. And so this is coming in a multi-tiered fashion. For example, in our professional learning communities this year, we have a student support educator joining those PLCs. So you might have, um, Ms. Rittiglami, the department chair of student support, join into an Algebra I PLC, look at the curriculum that they're doing and give them explicit advice and, and skills development on how to better differentiate those, um, academic strategies to meet all of our students' needs, to help all of our students grow. That's also happening with great co-teaching, which is going on with our English language learner teachers. We're pushing into science classes, pushing into math classes to continue to grow, um, our instructional practices on meeting individualized student needs. And our third and final action step is to continue, uh, with our PLCs. So you've heard me speak about this multiple times. We as a, a school really leverage the, um, the value that our professionals bring to each other. They are the masters of their content. They understand the curriculum. As we all know, the curriculum is constantly changing. It's constantly being updated. And we create the time within the school day to connect both content-specific and across curriculum and grades for our peers to sit down together, look at what's going on and how to improve our instructional practices. Third and final action step. At the bottom again, you will see where we align with our strategic plan to keep all of the work streamlined. What helped us through this process, it literally created a positive biological feedback loop. I was a science and math teacher in a previous life. Where every time we went to school council, they gave us a really good positive push. And then we went to SBLT, they gave us a positive push, continuously growing our reflection and our ability to take that feedback and put it into actionable steps. We had one more step to go though. It's not just SBLT or school council. It's all of Algonquin. Like how can all of our educators participate in our school improvement plan? What are they doing this year that they can become a stakeholder and put into place in their classroom right now? So what we did at the beginning of the school year is we presented the draft, the school improvement plan draft. And we asked each educator to reflect upon their goals that they had for this year and to write how they actively engaged with each one of the goals. Not each one of the action steps, because that necessarily may not fit in what they're teaching or doing, but each one of the goals. And so what that created was a great resource for administration, leadership team, school-based leadership team and school council to say, yes. Here is how our teachers understand goal one, action step one, and this is what they're doing. And what could we do to improve this for next year? We've already started that positive feedback loop on creating those action steps to continuously improve forward progress in our school improvement plan. That was a lot of talking, but I'm done. Any questions?
Thank you for that, um, very thorough, um, explanation of the process. Does anyone have any questions or?
I have just a, a, a comment or two. I mean, I think the work from sixteen through eighteen was tremendous. I mean, it was great to get it all kind of consolidated and, and reported to us. It was great. And I think, I think what you're doing going forward is, is equally ambitious. And it's nice to know that there's all that effort going on behind the scenes to not just kind of maintain the system, but make the system better over and over and over again. I think that's laudable. A comment on one of the new goals, the school bell, uh, study team or whatever. You know, there's, there's been an awful lot of discussion about school start times and the like. And there's a whole other group of people that are working on that. And there's certainly a great interrelationship between start time and bell ringing. And I certainly would make sure that, that those two groups work together. And then lastly, just a comment, I think it's, I think it's equally laudable that you tried to consolidate five or six goals down to three. One of the things you need to be worried about in a situation like that is things fall through the cracks. There's nothing about celebrating diversity in any of the new goals. It was a very specific call-out in the old ones from sixteen through eighteen. You know, one of the things we've learned here this year is just a number of languages spoken by students coming into the school this year has grown, you know, and continues to grow. The diversity of the student population here is significant. And I think the celebration of it isn't something I'd wanna see slip through the cracks. Just a thought. But thanks for all this. This is great.
Thank you. Joan?
First of all, thank you for the wonderful presentation and for the members that are on your, um, school improvement plan that are here. And I'd like to applaud you for the wide, uh, selection of people that are on your community, I mean, on your committee. A lot of times it's hard to get community representative and I see that you have one here who is in attendance tonight. But you have a combination of parents and teachers, which is wonderful. And I just wanted to speak on to goal number three of your new one. And I think that as, I think Rona Webb and the audience, as our, um, language teacher, ELL can attest to that your action step number two, when you talk about that, um, all professionals, we're going to, for teachers, look into the strategies from the Sheltered Immersion, the SCI course, is after taking that course, some of those strategies that are in there are so rich and so educationally sound that they can be applied to so many students across the board. So I was very pleased to see that those strategies were not just gonna stay with the ELL learners, but you're gonna take those strategies and apply them to everywhere, which could make a very rich and wide curriculum. So thank you very much for that.
All right, Paul?
I wanna echo what Paul Bucket said about it's a very impressive presentation and, and the whole analysis of the previous SIP seemed very thorough. So I applaud you for that. I had a couple of questions. One, on goal three, the action step one, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this instructional rounds protocol. Can you maybe give an example of a question of inquiry and how you apply that protocol to address it?
So a school might ask, um, they might look into how we're developing students' ability to communicate, right? How we're developing their communication skills? What are we asking them to do in the classroom? And that might lead to an inquiry-based question of what actual student discourse tasks do teachers, do students participate in, in a classroom? And so the rounds team, we would learn about the school. We would learn about their question, their focus and the why behind it. They might say that, um, we've realized our students lack the ability to debate, to create verbal communication, to function effectively and efficiently in student groups. And we're thinking it's because we're not developing those communication skills. And so we would visit a couple of classrooms, about twenty minutes a classroom. We'd be divided up in teams. There's four to five different teams and we'd go to a smattering of classrooms. And we'd all kind of look on what that meant. We've all been trained in how to collect data that isn't focused on the teacher. It's not meant to be evaluative. It's just facts. So-and-so said this, so-and-so said that. And then we take that information back and we discuss it as a team on what themes did we see? What opportunities did students have? What level of skill development did we provide for them and how could we change that? That stays with the school and they do what they need to do with that work because it's not supposed to be evaluative. It's supposed to be a learning process. But what's great for the individuals who are coming in to see it is we're getting a refreshing perspective on different instructional strategies and practices, how the schools are evaluating their own forward practice and how that could push our critical thinking back in our own school. So we've been divided into different teams. We're starting out as a small group, you know, about fifteen of us. And the goal is to continue to grow that work, um, to more and more individuals as each year grows. Each school participates and Greg could speak better to this than I could. Algonquin has about fifteen individuals. We're mixed in with central office staff, other schools, other teams so that we get blended in and can understand, um, different aspects that they could bring, different skill sets. Did I miss anything, Greg?
No, it's perfect. I think that it's a, a school improvement process, so it's not a program. And really the goal is for a visiting team to give a school more data around how they can grow and improve their practice. So it's one more data set added to a school's collection to identify how they can, um, you know, improve instruction. know, improve instruction.
But we selfishly benefit coming in, because now, we're learning that practice and how we can then apply to our own review of our own work.
All right. Okay. And another question on action step two on the same goal three, it talks about professional development for teachers and focusing on differentiation, struck with focus on special ed and sheltered English immersion, which I agree, it sounds great, it makes a lot of sense, but I wonder if we can do the same individualized instruction for more advanced kids who need to be challenged more so than they may be already?
So, that leverages kind of what Joan was speaking to, about giving educators a better understanding and a larger skill set on how to individualize instruction, whether it be from the struggling student to the advanced placement student, how to run those multiple different lessons within a lesson. And so, it's not just going to be for small subsets of teachers that teach different groups of students, it's going to be all staff, but it'll be tiered so that it can be applied at various levels. It's good instruction at many levels. Good teaching.
Thank you.
Joan?
May I just have a follow-up to Paul's question on instructional rounds? Maybe it's to Greg. When you talk about these group of educators going in and observing, is it an announced observation or is it unannounced?
So, it is scheduled. So, across our district, we have five networks, and as Dr. Wall said, each network contains around fifteen to twenty of our school leaders, educators, and all of the visits are pre-scheduled so schools know when a network will be visiting their school.
But it's not connected to an evaluation, there's no, it's not like an observation or evaluation? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Just on, that was the next question, but I think that it was answered through Paul's, that it was not evaluative.
No. So, it's really about what the students are doing and a focus on the task that students are working on. It's not focused on what the teachers are doing. So, we focus when we observe, what are the kids being asked to do, and as a result, what can we expect the outcomes of their learning to be based on the task?
So, the schools know when you're coming in, but do the teachers know?
Yes.
They do?
Yep.
Okay.
And the students?
Can teachers ask you to come in if they know you're coming into the building and you can't go to every classroom? Can teachers say, listen, I'm doing this lesson, but, you know, this cooperative group didn't work, I want you to focus on this one and to see how I can make this cooperative?
So, not through the instructional rounds process? So, the instructional rounds process is looking for patterns and trends over many classrooms? It's not about any one teacher and providing that teacher with individual feedback. So, it's really looking for patterns and trends over many classrooms around an inquiry question or problem of practice that a school developed.
Okay.
Is it within the district or are you going outside the district?
Just within our district. So, all five of our networks are internal folks participating in that, and we're going to visit all ten of our schools.
As a high school, though, wouldn't you want to see how kids are, like, like the communications? Like, kids aren't debating, they're not talking. I have a feeling that, you know, kids at high school, I know they're not supposed to have their cell phones, probably have more of an issue in high school than they would in a K through five school, you know what I mean, or six school, however, you know, Southborough is different than Northborough. So, is it helping going to younger schools to come back to a high school? And, you know what I mean? To take those? It's actually easier for the high school to not have to observe high school, because now, we're not actually looking at, for example, if I went into a high school math class or high school science class, I automatically gravitate to the curriculum, which is how we've been trained in life. But when you remove that commonality for us high school, faculty members that are on this, and we're looking at the lower grades, the curriculum is now removed, and like Greg said, I'm just looking at the task of the child and how that relates to the inquiry-based question. So, selfishly, we really lucked out. I don't know about the other nine schools, but we're pretty good over here.
And my recommendation would be to have a more in-depth presentation around instructional rounds, because there is a lot to it and it's complicated.
Okay. Yeah. Any other?
Yeah, one more follow-up on that. So, how do you come up with the questions of inquiry?
So, every school does it very differently, and that, again, speaks to what Greg said about more in-depth presentation. Algonquin has decided to do it our individualized way, which best meets our school needs, in which we put in a specific protocol in place where each educator develops kind of their own inquiry-based question. We paired them up with a peer, they had to debate it out, communicate, on what would be their agreed-upon inquiry-based question, and so on and so forth, till each department member is actually going to come together next Tuesday with all of the post-it notes. We're going to look for patterns and trends, we're going to vote as a school on where we feel we should start our focus on our inquiry-based question, and that will happen, I think, two weeks from now. That's how Algonquin did it, to make sure that all of our stakeholders were involved. Every school did it different depending on their need. And we're also kind of a different beast, we're much larger than some of the other schools, so we had to go about it a different way.
Okay.
And I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to the school council, because they're here, and they're amazing, and they're fantastic, and it's late, and I really appreciate that you guys are here. Thank you.
Well, I think, thank you for this great presentation, really laid it out to me very clearly, the process that you went through and how you went from the previous plan to this plan. And I too want to thank all the members of the school council for their time and effort. It's a lot of work, and it really is what's, you know, driving a lot of the initiatives. It was very clear to me, a lot of the initiatives, all of the initiatives, pretty much that we see over the years at the school originate at the school improvement plan. So, it's vitally important to the work of the school, and I thank everyone who participates in the time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next item is update on the MASC/MASS joint conference. I was not able to go.
So, Superintendent Johnson and I and Kathleen were able to attend. So, as always, there was a wealth of different sessions and workshops that you could avail yourself to. I attended a workshop on social emotional learning that focused on, you know, how do we make true connections to students and how do you assess that? So, a teacher might think that he or she has made a connection to a student, but if the student doesn't feel that, then it's not really a connection. So, how do you assess it and how do you get kids involved in making that, those types of decisions around true connections? And then, for me, I think the greatest benefit to the conference is just networking with other school committee members, other districts, sometimes hearing the great things that they're working on, and other times, hearing the great challenges that they're facing and realizing that we have it pretty great here in Northborough, Southborough.
Joan? No, it's another great conference, it's very well-attended. I think it is, my personal opinion, most valuable to newer school committee members who, you know, if nothing else, I mean, it's just a watershed of information, and you learn a lot of the lingo, especially if you're not from education. And, you know, there's always updates from DESE, and there's usually a good subset of regional school issues, and so, it's just, you know, you end up thinking, okay, I want to go to more of the sessions than I am able to attend.
Yes.
But, so, in the future, I would highly recommend, especially for newer school committee members, to really, really try and attend it.
Yeah, when I have been able to attend, it's very valuable, and the same thing, it's like things are on at the same time, and what do I do? But, but they do sometimes run similar topics at different times, so like, you might not exactly be able to go to one event, one of the presentations, but there'll be one that's slightly on the same topic that you could attend. Some of these more, might take a little bit of a little different take on it, but, so it does provide a lot of opportunity.
Joan? Through the chair, I'd like to ask Kathleen a question. Were you our delegate?
No, Jack was.
Jack was?
Yeah.
Okay. So, were you guys able, so, did you attend the annual meeting or no?
No, I couldn't.
You couldn't because you weren't our delegate?
Well, no, I wasn't our delegate because I couldn't attend.
Oh, okay.
Because they moved it to Friday afternoon.
Okay.
So, that was just, and I understand why they did it, because most, you know, educators and, you know, whatever can get out to make it Friday afternoon, but I had to leave.
Okay. I was just wondering about the referents or something that they always take a vote on?
Yeah, I looked at this MASC website, but I didn't see, they haven't posted the, at least not that I saw. I can't log in. So, maybe it's posted, but you have to log in first.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the report on class sizes and standardized assessment results. So, presentation?
So, for class sizes, you should have, I need to see if we get it. Yeah, I can put it up on the slide if that's needed. All right. And you're all going to pass out copies when you're going to log on. I'm sorry, I'm going to log in. I will make sure I make copies and pass out. Good thing I have it on the laptop. So, what's exciting to report out for our class size is that, on average, across all of our departments, our average class size is below twenty-three. So, let me go ahead and bring that up. Just so there is that move, I go ahead and put a presentation up for you. So, the first item that I, which Joan, turn this on, right? That will help. Do you see anything happening?
There we go.
Something, something's happening.
It's coming.
Don't let the glasses fool you here. Okay. So, what I would do is I'll make sure that school committee members all received this copy. I apologize that you did not receive it. The first item that I displayed is the same chart that I displayed last year, and it's the overall average of classes, class size, for students in the classes across departments. And like I said, what's exciting to report is that, on average, every one of our departments is twenty-three or less students per class size. And that ranges, you know, some of them dip down for an average of eighteen, and some of them go up to that twenty-two point six. So, but kind of, you know, spread evenly across the departments, which is a nice way to see that we have a good balance in the schedule, especially as we move forward to investigate a new schedule. Any questions about this one? And I'll put up a table, which makes this more clear in a second. Okay. Let me go ahead, sorry, you're getting the like kid picture there, need to update it. Because I'm not on presenter mode, it just makes it fun. Challenging. This next chart will break down which classes are above twenty-five students and which classes are below ten. So, go ahead and put that one up for you. Again, I will make sure that I share this out. So, it's the same chart that I showed last year, it's the middle chart on the paper that you'll receive, and it gives the class size distribution across the departments, the overall averages, and the numbers mean the number of sections. So, for example, there's one section in Applied Arts that has more than twenty-five students, I will show you what that is. And then, there's four sections that have less than ten students. Might be a specialized course, and I can explain what that is if you have questions. But on average, across all of the sections, there's about nineteen students in the classes. And I've gone ahead and presented that across each one of the departments. Questions?
So, just a quick one, under ten is kind of a little vague, you know, so is that always like eight or nine? I mean, we didn't have any classes where we're devoting a teacher for like three students or anything, or do we?
No.
So, it's more?
But we could have a class that might have six or seven students. It might be, for example, if you see math, and you're looking at, you know, why do you have five sections that are under ten? These are more intervention-level math classes, where students have a gap in learning. They might be an ESL student, they might be a student on an IEP who has some extra goals or supports, and so, it's intentionally small, so you can have that intervention. But the offset might be, you might have a section, our AP Stats section, I think, comes in at like twenty-seven for that math. And I can show that on the next one for classes that are above twenty-five. Any other questions about this chart? No, I'm kind of just throwing it at you. So, the third picture that I will put up, my master skill set again, I hope someone makes fun of me on my outdoor picture, because now, it's snowing outside, so it's bad. I will put up the second chart, chart number two, same as last year, where I show which classes are above twenty-five per department. And there you have it. So, on the left, you have the courses, and if you see more than one course name, it's because the teachers decide to run the courses concurrently to meet individual student needs, the department. The total number of sections of that class that are offered, so if we talk about the first one, which is Applied Arts, there are three sections that are offered. One of the sections exceeds the twenty-five. In the parenthesis, you'll see the twenty-seven, that's a note to myself to say that it's at twenty-seven, there's two extra kiddos in there, but the course is co-taught. I have two educators in there. So, although I'm above the twenty-five, I have two educators in there, because the students are really doing hands-on work. They're working with the bandsaw, they're working with the 3D printer and other really innovative technological advancements within that program. So, you can see why I might have more students, but you can also see that across the two educators, it makes sense.
So, I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions tonight. Public speaking, thirty-nine kids in one class, co-taught, there's two teachers there or whatever, that's terrific, but in the course of a semester, I mean, how many times does a kid get to speak if he's only, public speaking once out of every thirty-nine opportunities? I mean, assuming that they kind of on average rotate and get kind of equal opportunities to talk or make whatever presentation it is they're making, it seems, it seems like it would be a little, you know, short in the experience for them.
One of our most number-one sought-after electives, I had to be a guest speaker, it's very nerve-wracking for those thirty-nine students. What's great about Ms. Morrison and Ms. Salt is that they will break the class apart, do a lot of smaller group work, bring the class together for those big presentations to kind of put you on the spot and develop your skills, break you back down apart. There was, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So, although it seems like a large number at face value, when you start looking at how they structure the class, Ms. Morrison leverages the black box, she brings the kid in there, makes a whole presentation format, Ms. Salt leverages her classroom nearby, creates it smaller setting, and then brings them back together. Great question. She'd be a guest speaker, it's very nerve-wracking. You never know what they're going to ask you. Any other questions?
So, I have a question. So, do we think, it looks like Latin, that they seem, they're over, is that a problem? I mean, I know you can't have too many classes, it seems like there's a lot of people interested in that, because it's twenty-nine in the class and twenty-seven.
So, you wouldn't say it was a problem, what, it's kind of like, how innovative can we be and how can we strategize on here? So, if you look at the second one, Latin II CP, an additional student that we added was someone doing AP Individual, Independent Study. So, we have some overlay going on in those classes to make sure that we're kind of like what Paul was mentioning, pushing students at every level. So, and a lot of our language classes, even though Algonquin only requires two years, consecutive years of the same language, many of our students go on to three or four, and so, that's why you're going to see those higher numbers, and it's across all of our language courses. And you've heard Christine talk about one of the reasons that we run student abroad. Somebody help me here, fill me in. Do they pay to come here?
All right. Exchange.
Thank you. Student exchange, right? So that we are kind of creating a buffer system on bringing on maybe another foreign language teacher, which would add a different elective where students can choose to maybe that third or fourth year to develop a second language. Good question.
And this is it? There's just ten classes over twenty-five in the whole curriculum?
Great, yes.
That's terrific.
And some of them are by, most of them seem by design. I mean, you take all the music ones, and the more the merrier there. So, it sounds, that's really less than ten. It's probably five.
And if you balance it out with the intentional smaller settings that we make, it really is a great balance. We're meeting students at both levels.
And I think if we reflect that-
And I think if we reflect that to four years ago or five years ago, this was a very different picture.
Well, that's my point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is, we, we saw much bigger numbers. You would have needed a few slides to go over the over twenty-five.
Yeah, social studies was a big issue, I remember.
Okay.
Terrific.
I just have one comment. I know the numbers are high for the Latin. And I see one class is twenty-seven, the other one is twenty-nine. But wow, I remember when we were sitting in the original library before the renovation and parents came up to ask if we could possibly do one class of Latin. And I believe there were two or three students. And it happened to be a reporter who was in and said, I could come in and teach at the one class. And now to know what success, that we're up to twenty-seven and twenty-nine and there, there's more. But the success of the, of adding Latin to the curriculum was wonderful.
Oh, good, thank you. Any other questions?
That's good. So do we have the standardized assessment results too?
Yes.
Yes, I've got, yeah.
Yep, so I'm going to put up, um, a lot of more questions going on today. A picture for Tim. Tim, did you have the handout for?
I have, I, I, again, that's something we can get to the committee members. I don't have a color handout right now.
All right. So which one would you like first, your first? I have this one.
I'll just find the numbers.
Got it, well do.
Twenty-eighteen.
My computer's so fancy that it won't go away from presenter mode. So Tim's first line is this picture. There you go. Great.
It's just, yes, that is it. It's a little cut off, but it's great, thank you. So what you're going to see is an overview of four of the standardized tests. And I'll share some highlights. And you'll see that it really speaks to the exceptional efforts of the educators and students to prepare themselves for, um, higher learning. So the first thing we're looking at right here are the advanced placement, um, test information. You'll see here from the end of the year seventeen to the school year ending twenty-eighteen, there's an increase of students who take AP courses, which is, is great to see that they're, they're either taking the risk or preparing themselves, um, to be prepared for these, um, higher level classes. You will also see that the number of exams attempted, again, a great, a great number to see, has increased. The number of students who had scores of three or better, um, which shows their preparedness for the college level courses and may get them the college credit, um, has increased as well. Three hundred and seventy-two, um, last year. And along with that, the percent of students who had scores of three or higher, ninety-one point two percent. So, um, what you'll, there's actually, does this have the, the bar graph with it? Is this the right document with that?
This one?
Yeah. So what you'll see here is that, um, compared to the state of Massachusetts, the peers that also took the same testing, you know, we achieve, um, you know, well above what the average is for the state. And actually from twenty-seventeen to eighteen, you've seen an increase in that gap of, of performance as compared to the state. The next, we'll move along to the A C T.
Can you give me a quick distraction?
Okay.
So just to kind of, to put it into perspective also, out of the two hundred and eighty-six districts, we were the, um, the fourteenth district in terms of rankings for students who scored three or above on, on that. So again, and it's, it's a great performance and a testament to the work of our students and teachers.
You say fourteenth?
Yeah, so we were fourteen out of two hundred and sixty, sixty, eighty-six, um, districts.
Well done.
So the next one is A C T results in H R.
Okay, so what you see here is from seventeen to eighteen, we had slightly fewer students testing on the A C T standardized test. But you'll see the performance has increased in all areas. They have E L A for English, mathematics, reading, science, um, and then the composite score as well. And you'll also see in the comparison to the college readiness benchmarks, our students are performing well above those benchmarks that indicate that they have a high probability of succeeding in college level courses. And then as we look at the chart, you can again see, um, how our students compare to the state of Massachusetts, where in all areas, they're, um, well above the average for the state. And in twenty-eighteen, that gap again has increased in the, in the performance. So it really is, um, showing some good improvement there. The next one we'll take a look at are S A T results. So in the S A T, um, from twenty-seventeen to eighteen, you see about the same number of students, um, took it in each cohort. There is a, a slight downtick in, in, in the E R W, which is the evidence-based reading and writing section of the test. But there was a, a pretty significant increase in the performance in mathematics compared to the state of Massachusetts averages. Again, doing well as compared to the state. There is the bar graph that goes with it, but I think it, it says it in the table as well. You can see that, uh, our students have achieved well above, um, the state and those college readiness benchmarks are also indicated there as well. That show again that, um, they have a, what it says is if you achieve the benchmark, you have a seventy-five percent chance of earning at least a C in first semester credit bearing courses. So, um, I think you can see that our students have indicated that they are well prepared for the higher learning. And then the last standardized test we'll talk about is the M C A S. And, um, so you'll see that in all areas, E L A, mathematics and, uh, science, techni- technology and engineering, most of which are biology tests. Our freshmen are all given the biology test, so most of the tests are, but there might be some, um, transfer students or students, um, who for whatever reason, um, might take, we have a small number take physics and, and chemistry as well, but the vast majority take biology test right from here. So continued success in the E L A area, ninety-seven percent advanced or proficient in that. Math stays about the same, but again, I mean, I should have mentioned earlier, you know, of course, we have to keep in mind that it's a different cohort of students, different test. So you'll see that still it's, it's at ninety percent advanced and proficient, uh, which is, which is good achievement in both math and science. Um, one other thing I just want to talk about quickly is the S G P, which is a student growth percentile. And as indicated, um, by the, the D E S C, they set guidelines for S G P. And, and just to point out, um, the number sixty-two point five in E L A indicates higher growth on, um, on average. Our students are achieving high growth from their previous English test, which was the eighth grade test to the, to the tenth grade test. In math, it's moderate growth, but it's on the high level. Cause at sixty, you go into the higher growth range. So, um, we're, we're seeing, um, healthy growth in mathematics. Um, science does not measure S G P, you don't get those numbers. And so that, um, that's the overview. There's another look at, uh, broken, broken down into advanced level versus proficient, needs improvement and, uh, warning.
Okay. Have any questions, Joan?
Uh, for those students that are in the warning and needs improvement category, uh, what type of remediation do we offer? And, cause if the students are, at what level do they get the state certificate for graduation? Cause this is sophomore year, correct?
That is correct.
So those students who are in warning and, um, needs improvement, do they have another opportunity to take the test or to offer, um, a portfolio instead? If, if it's something that they cannot take the technology test?
So what we, what we do is we have, um, our guidance partner puts together a plan for each student who hasn't achieved the proficiency level, which is a two forty score on, on the testing, in order to eventually demonstrate proficiency. So some of the things that we do are, um, we, we make sure that those students take a fourth year of math. Um, cause right now it's, it's not a graduation plan, it's take four. So the, uh, those students will take four years of math. They may be put into a focus study to have that extra support in, in, um, achievement in math. We have after-school opportunities for them. In E L A, we have our, our Algonquin Writing Center that we heard a little bit about tonight, um, where they can get extra support and then the family can be given resources in terms of tutoring to prepare. Students who haven't achieved a two-twenty, which is the, uh, needs improvement level, do retake the test as well. So they do need to get a two-twenty or better in, in E L A in math, as well as demonstrate proficiency eventually. But if a student's achieved between three-twenty and two-thirty-eight, then they, they don't need to retake the test, but they, they have to show proficiency in those ways.
Can they take it up even in their senior year, knowing that you don't get the results until the summer? So could they take the test in the early, late winter, early spring?
Um, they have, so from the time they are taking the spring sophomore year M C A S test, they have about four more opportunities to be able to take those tests, up to and including the, the spring testing period. I mean, hypothetically or theoretically, you know, if a student has not achieved that and they've, um, achieved all the other graduation requirements, they can come back after.
So they walk in graduation. Oh, I know, and I hold their diploma.
Yeah.
And once we get confirmation from the state, then they get their diploma kind of in the summer.
Okay.
So we always do. And they can come back and test if for some reason, after their fourth year they didn't pass, they can still come back and take the test.
But they could also submit, could not the educators submit a portfolio for those students of their work?
There is, there, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's more detailed. I mean, that's, that's a lot of work.
As well.
We have done it for some of our students, but it's, um, content specific. So they might do it maybe in science only and then in math and English and take the test.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, explaining those remediation strategies and policies. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it's just one comment that, um, this spring will be the first year that our high school students will be taking M C A S online with a computer-based assessment. Um, and it will be complete, completely transitioned to the next generation assessment. So that is a change we are actually looking forward to.
Thank you for the presentation. The next item is the English Language Education Update.
So we have Rhoda Webb, our Director of English Language Education here to give her presentation. I just want to, before she begins, commend her for her, um, great work across the district and making sure that, um,
Thank you.
Global education is something that is valued and, and is, um, an emphasis. And the support that, um, Mrs. Webb provides to our families across our district is amazing. So I want to thank her publicly for her work.
Thank you. Thank you, and it is a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update of the English Language Education Program. As I do every year, it's important to remind us who an English learner is in the state of Massachusetts, and that's a student whose first language is not English and cannot perform ordinary classwork, um, in English. That is our state definition. Uh, the regulations in Massachusetts from the Department of Education require that when a home language survey is completed by a family and a language other than English is, is, uh, mentioned in that survey, we must, uh, test the student for language proficiency, that is English language proficiency, to make sure that the student is able to access the academic level of the classroom. According to the level of language proficiency, we then qualify the student as an English learner. And the program that we have in our district is called Structured English Immersion. It's one of the programs allowable in the state of Massachusetts and it's comprised by two parts. One is English Language Development taught by, uh, ESL licensed teachers. At this time, we have two at Algonquin and I'll come back to that to say how grateful we are to have two teachers at this point at Algonquin. The other component to that program is structured content, um, in, instruction. And that, uh, those are the teachers who have an S E I endorsement. As you were mentioning about the retail initiatives, so they have taken the training to be able to scaffold instruction in the science, uh, social studies, English, special education teachers also needed this endorsement, uh, history and civics, um, to be able to teach students who are English learners from levels three and up. If we look at the trend at Algonquin, we still continue to receive students coming from another country, different from in our lower schools, the, the children are coming, um, are either born in the United States or are coming to us at a younger age. But Algonquin, they're coming to us at sixteen and seventeen-year-old. And with, um, no English or at the word level, at the phrase level. And we've all heard about the wonderful benefits and the level of academic achievement that our students, uh, reach here at Algonquin. And our students are doing double the work. So they're learning how to, um, do school in the United States, because one thing is the acculturation process of our students. School looks different in other countries, they have to get used to their new home. They're adjusting here with their families as well. We do a very good job in getting to know our families on a personal level, either the families or the guardians and the students, because we deeply need to understand the, uh, educational background of each student, their, um, mobility, the reasons, their life experiences, their stories are very rich. They come to us with wonderful life experiences, sometimes very different from our own experiences with a vast number of languages that are represented here at Algonquin, and we'll look at that in a minute. But we need to understand very carefully the context for every student, so that, uh, we do a very good job at tailoring what each student needs to be able to graduate from Algonquin. And no matter what age they come to us. So part of what we see, and if you look at the graph of, um, what we've been able to, the very first graph that you have that is in dark blue and a lighter blue, which is our trend analysis since two thousand and four. And of course, regulations have changed over the years. The darker bar are the number of students, English learners that we have at this point. Actually, I'm going to update this because we have a new student that has arrived. We receive students at any time of the year. So school in many countries ends in December. We see that we start receiving students as from January. So of course, we freeze our data, um, to be able to do this presentation. These are not the same students that we had last year. Uh, of course, we had students graduate last year. We have reclassified students and we go through an intense, um, following the department's regulations as well as when we can reclassify a student. But we need to monitor those students for four years to make sure that they keep, um, progressing academically. That's the lighter bar. So at this time, we have twenty-seven English learners in our program and forty-seven students whom we are actively monitoring to make sure. to make sure that they are able to stay up to date with their grades and that they keep learning and that they are successful in their courses. If we look at the second page, which is the languages that we have here at Algonquin, we are fortunate to have a diversity of languages. There's a comparison to your left from last year to this year. We have an increase now, the newest information is twenty-three languages. Portuguese and Spanish are our majority languages, but as you see, we've got Japanese, Thai, Arabic, French, Hindi, Indonesian, Russian, Vietnamese, Armenian, Chinese, Filipino, German, Gujarati, Haitian Creole, Hebrew, Korean, Malay, Polish, Punjabi, Swahili and Creole. The common language, of course, among all our students is English. But this allows for wonderful cultural diversity and linguistic diversity as well. It is of interest, and I know that preschool sounds, there's a very, age-wise, a gap, right, between preschool and the high school. But currently, in our preschool, almost fifty percent of our students are growing up with another language in the home, and there are nineteen languages in our preschool at this time. And when I report to Northborough and to Southborough, we'll also see the diversity of languages that are present in all of our schools and our towns. If we look at the third graph that you have there, those are the language proficiencies of the students. We do look at that very carefully. There's a language assessment that we provide in order to have a baseline of where the students, where they are when they come to us. It goes from levels one to level five. Level one meaning no English or at the word level, all the way to level five, which is being able to speak, read and write in complex and compound sentences. The Department of Education looks at two distinct levels, a foundational level and a transitional level. The foundational level, which is levels one, two and a low three, are the very basics. So at most, it's at a simple sentence level. So when we look at our students, even the high-developing, it's very difficult to access what is going on in the classroom. And therefore, the importance that every day that the students come to us at school, it's intense learning that is happening in the school. The, when I mention that it is a wonderful thing that we now have two ESL teachers here at Algonquin, is because the course offerings that we have now are able to better cater to the needs of the students that we have. So we have an English Language Development Level one, two, an English Language Development Level three and a Level four, also a study for English learners. As Sarah mentioned, we've got two co-talk classes. So they're truly co-talk classes in that we have an ESL teacher, Ms. Simpson, with a math teacher, and they're both co-teaching. The ESL teacher is looking at the language, the linguistic load of that content area, that is math specifically. And we also have a physics co-talk. So Ms. Suker with the physics teacher are co-teaching that class. They also each have planning periods. So it is a true collaboration because they're looking at the linguistic load of physics as well as the linguistic load of math, sort of students can access. And I'm talking about students from levels one to four, which language, of course, we need to be able to make sure that they can access the high level of content that they are required to achieve. I've talked about our languages. They're doing double the work also as regards accountability. You heard about MCAS. High school students are also taking SATs. Our English learners take the Access 2.0 test, and that is to know the language proficiency. So the moment they start at schools, we know through the screener from the Department of Education what language proficiency they're at. Now in January, from January third to February eighth, there's the Access State Test. The results will give us language proficiency, and we are able to measure growth from one year to the next of the students. Our students are working very hard. Our teachers are working very hard as well, because our students are also taking MCAS. For students who are still learning English, for example, we have interpreters in Spanish and Portuguese, so there's no misunderstanding with the instructions of MCAS, but the test is in English. And our students retake the test when needed to be able to get to the level to be able to then graduate from Algonquin. We do have good success rate with our students who are able to graduate from our school. Another course that I, I missed that we are, we noticed that our students, in order to be able to take US History, needed an introduction to US History to understand the language of history, especially our foundational levels from one to three. So that's also another course that we offer for our students. And then they're able to, at a high Level Three, take US History with our teachers, with our history teachers. We had mentioned the retail initiative. We are hosting a course here at Algonquin in the spring for those teachers who still need the SEI endorsement. At this point, we have seventy-five of our core academic teachers who have the endorsement, which is fantastic. We work very closely with our families as well, so parent and guardians. There were two sessions which were organized between our two English Language Development teachers, Brian Kalnun, because of Canvas, we wanted all our families to be able to access technology and understand where they could see our students' grades and how they are doing. And also with Lisa Connery, Director of Guidance, to explain our high school here and so that our parents are completely immersed in the expectations of our schooling here. We also have our International Night every year, where we invite all our families to get to know each other from all our ten schools in our community. We also offer, we don't offer, actually. We are able to, we've done a research of all the adult ESL classes in our region to be able to give our families, adults who want to learn more English and access that. I had mentioned in September, of course, our students, many of our students, come to our three-week program to continue to learn English. And at that point, I had said we had focused on financial literacy because we knew that was something that our students needed to be able to take business courses here at Algonquin and entrepreneurship. So we try to leave, try to pay attention to every possibility that we can, get to know our students and the skills that they come to us so that we can bridge that gap and so that they are successful and move on to college if that is their goal after they have been here with us at Algonquin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for Rhoda? Catherine?
So every year I hear your presentation, every year I am blown away that you can take a student who speaks Swahili and not only, you know, teach them English, but immerse, you know, immerse them in this crazy high school environment that we have here. And so I was just curious, do we have statistics on success rates post-high school of these kids?
So many of our students do stay in touch with us, or they stay in touch with Guidance and Ms. Simpson. So they are, they are pursuing what they set out to do. So the students that went to college are staying in college. Some need to take ESL classes in college, which is very understandable, right? They're coming here in their late teens, but they are pursuing and they're working. So the other thing, a lot of our students are also working. So they're not only learning here and achieving here in the high school. And if we look at the research, it does, the research still says five to seven years to reach academic levels in another language if you have literacy in your first language. Some of our students don't have that strong educational background. So the most important thing is we do provide an environment which takes care of the student and all those connections that we're talking about at every level. There's a lot of empathy and care for our students here. And that's what makes a success later on, right? In the present time, it is very, it is difficult and challenging to leave everything behind, whether it's a positive move or a move due to trauma, or war, or in a refugee status. And it's very important to feel that there is a new life here and a new home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Joan?
Rhoda, I'd like to applaud you, as Kathleen said. This is, every year, it's a fabulous presentation you do. And knowing the high percentage number of teachers have the SEI endorsement. But I think, besides making this presentation here of what happens in the school is something that I saw that you did back in October eighteenth, and it was at the Northborough, but I'm sure it happens in Southborough in Algonquin. It was a night event at Peaslee School. Greg was in attendance also. And it was a family math night. And I just attended just to see what was going on, and Rhoda was there. And it was fabulous because she was there on her own time and explaining to the, to those parents of the students so that they could understand, and she was interpreting for some of the parents. And I could see how it could be daunting, is that if I go to a foreign country and I cannot speak the language, but you're making that connection. So this is what you do here in the curriculum with the students, but there is also so much more that you do outside to bring the parents into the community and to feel welcome. I only saw one night in Northborough, but I'm sure there's many nights that you do in Southborough and you do here at the region. So I would just like to say that I'm thankful for you and for all your initiatives and all the teachers that are part of your staff. Because seeing that you were giving that extra night to make an area of math at the lower level, K through five, and explaining that math to those parents that had to be daunted and maybe scared coming into a building, you just made it more welcoming for them. So I'd like to applaud you for what you do. The time that you give, that's not on the paper here.
It's truly a team, it's truly a team effort. So even at the high school, we make sure that our families who need interpretation come, and we pre-book that. We pre-book that at every single school because it's essential for the adults in the family to understand. They want to know. Our families really want to know. But as you say, languages are a means of communication. They don't need to be a barrier. And we can make that happen. And so it's definitely a team effort and working with a lot of staff members and interpreters and volunteers to bring our families to feel a part, that they also belong to our community. So thank you for that.
Goodness to your staff and yourself. Thank you.
So it was, it was a great presentation. And when I was here for conferences, there was a mom who was in front of me in one of the, in one of the conferences, and she had an interpreter. So she could meet with a teacher just to know what was going on with their child, which I thought was fantastic. It was nice. It was nice to see that that's, that they're supported to come in to understand what's going on. So it's good.
I think it's also important to point out in FY eighteen that budget-supported additional ELD staff member. So we have two staff members who are supporting the work, and that additional staff member has made a world of difference in the types of services and programs we can provide our students.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the program review.
Sue, we have been selected to participate in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Targeted Program Review. By Mass General Law, the DESE is required to audit forty districts across the Commonwealth. This is a little bit different than the Coordinated Program Review, where that is about compliance. The Targeted Program Review is really around a visiting team coming in to see our work and giving us feedback around how we can improve. The review begins with a self-assessment. So we've begun that self-assessment. That self-assessment focuses on six different areas. It's leadership and governance, human resources and professional development, finance and finances and assets, student support, curriculum instruction and assessment. From that self-assessment, the DESE will choose three domains to focus in on. We are also required to submit a documentation audit to the DESE, and they will use that data as well to continue the program review. And then in early December, we'll have a visiting team visit us. The team will be five or six members. Will visit us for three days. And the date starts January seventh, eighth and ninth. And they will interview teachers. They will observe teaching and learning. They will interview school committee members. And really, the goal is to provide us with a report to support our work and growth and improving. We actually welcome this program review. The timing is outstanding. As our school, our Vision 2020 strategic plan is sunsetting, this is another lens that we can add to that dataset as we think about re-authoring our vision and our strategic plan moving forward. So more information to follow in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Now moving on to Superintendent's Report to the Committee.
So this month, we have the pleasure of not hearing about just one principal's report, but two. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Walsh.
I will just pull pieces though, you know, the night is getting made. I'm going to start with October. In the first section, I wanted to point out how, if you go back to our class sizes and reference how teachers overlay various class sizes, various classes. One of them was applied art, and I'm going to focus specifically on a robotics class. In one level class, they started out by using a Lego model to build a certain structure. They then took it in the same class and applied it to a graphics 3D design and was able to actually build their own robotic arm that was writing, I think, the ARHS Algonquin letters. So there you have an example where you have the multi-layered classes. And the result was starting with Legos and ending with robotic arms. Truly phenomenal application of work. Under Activities and Clubs, thank you so much to Principal Carb and Principal Lavoy from Trotty and Mellican. We hosted the eighth-grade band members at a football game with our pep band. So you have a picture there in Activities and Clubs with our eighth graders smiling right there in the front row. Too cute. And they had all Algonquin shirts on. And then later on, we marched in the Heritage Day Parade, and we noticed that Mellican and Trotty were wearing Algonquin shirts. So not only great marketing, but also great connection with a middle school student to a high school student, allowing for a more positive transition to the high school when that day comes for them. On the second page, under Athletics, Code Tom Hanks was a huge success. The students attended, as Mike had alluded to, attended the first fine arts concert. I was there, my family and I attended it as well. It was great to see so many athletes in the crowd. And they continue to earn their bonus pride points in the competition in how many team members attend different events. So it's really exciting. Winter tryouts, you can see in the October one, it talks about how winter tryouts are coming up. They are going on this week. They are in full swing with some of our competitive plays starting this weekend. And what was really fun in October is our Athletic Council and our athletes joined our Unified Color Guard and our marching band in the Heritage Day Parade. And we had quite a big showing to participate in our community event. It was great to see the different groups of kids come together and collaborate and make positive connections outside of the school. Under Department Updates, our concerts were both a great success. Our World History is really leveraging the Service Learning Project, which is part of their civic expectations, the changes in their standards. And you'll see that they started a Baron Assessments Drive, and then in this month, the success of that drive. So it's great to see those academic standards come to life and really help your community. On the following page, under Guidance, Lisa was speaking about the Annual College Fair. Jackie presented, Julie presented it for tonight. We hosted over a hundred colleges here in our gym for the fair. Fantastic event. It's a lot of student-parent information. Great resource for our parents and our students. And had I mentioned, I also mentioned in the SIP, the Algonquin Writing Center and hosting the Night Against Procrastination to get their college essays done. A great resource and a de-stresser for our students during a very difficult time. It's kind of like a crunch time for them. Additional resource. Student Support, I talk a little about it in October and more about it in November. Super huge kudos to Karen Brown and Monique Vudier. We have started vocational and occupational opportunities here within the school. Reach one of our department chairs, turn back to the department members and ask them, what could some of our internal programs with our students do to do some real-life application skills in the school, as well as some of our community applications? So student support has worked closely with vocational, occupational opportunities. And we've developed more opportunities within the school to help students apply with their learning in the classroom outside of the classroom. And then on the last page, I just really like the math. I'm biased with math and science, where I previously taught. I loved I loved how they took inductive and deductive reasoning, they turned it into a project-based lesson where the students had to go out into the world, look at two forms of advertisement and make the connections on the application of it through math and then present it back out to their peers. So kind of like those global competitive skills coming to life and taking math and applying it across different venues. Something that you don't see happen that often and it was great to see the teacher put that right into practice. And of course, it's always fun to see that application and generalization of skills in geometry class, which is an MCAS class. So you never know what they're going to get on the test. For November, I made a slight change. In the top, you'll see the pictures have changed. I decided that I wanted to promote more art wherever possible. So what I'm doing now is I've gone back to our visual arts teachers and I've asked them for key pieces of art that represent kind of some of our seasons. So these two pieces of artwork are student-based art, they're hung in the school and they kind of give that fall setting that why not give another opportunity of showcasing our student artwork? So that's what you see is two recent pieces by our students, which is phenomenal work. I'd like to keep it and put it in my own house, but that's a side note. Under academics, Ms. Griffin, under Applied Arts, worked with Ms. Popis, our Applied Arts Department Chair, Library and all of history. And what they did is they brought in international, 18 prominent international journalists. They linked up with the United States Department, National Government on bringing our International Visitors Leadership Program, which hosted them. And it's all around this news literacy project and where we at Algonquin are ahead of the game in leveraging our students' ability to take a program called Checkology, which helps our students become critical thinkers about the changing digital landscape. Like how do you know what your source is? Is it a valid source? Is it reliable? And it's constantly changing, so how do you navigate it? So the students showed our international journalists how they apply Checkology. And then they were able to question and answer each other on how that applies in both their work, in their classwork, in the journalistic work, in real-life work. So it was really great to have that opportunity to showcase it. I know Greg and Christine attended the event. Central office support was phenomenal to have there. Under activities and clubs, our Operation Tomahawk Club hosted a Veterans Day ceremony. We had one of our local community members from the VFW come to present. The reason that I point this out is that we have two commendable seniors. The majority of Algonquin students go on to college. These two have chosen military. And they were able to talk to their peers about why they chose military. And what was breathtaking and stopping for me is that after each of their presentations, the entire auditorium full of Algonquin students stood up and cheered them on. Because they spoke about how they are making this choice to protect their way of life to go on to college and our students reciprocated in their thank, thanking them in their applause. It was, it was just great to see the diversity and the celebration of it. And it all came from them. National Business Honor Society had induction, 20 new students. Our National Honors Science Society had 40 new students inducted, one of, two of the many 18 national honor societies. Our English Honor Society has 22 new members being inducted, I believe tomorrow. And at the bottom, if I don't give our sophomore class a babysitting fundraiser shout-out on December 15th, because Ms. Burns is the person who is the advisor and she was also on school council, I think it would come back to haunt me. So anybody with small children, December 15th, drop them off. Babysitting fundraiser for holiday shopping. On our following page, winter sports night, huge success. As I said, we're in our first week of winter season tryouts. Kids are enjoying it. I walked the building today to check in on practices, all having fun. Have to commend our cheer team. For the first time in the history of our cheerleader program, they are on to nationals, first time ever. So obviously it's going to be a big trip. They know they've got the paperwork, they've already started the process. But I mean, they go from finishing fifth at regionals to 11th at states and now they're going on to nationals. It's a true dedication of both the coaches and the students and the families that it takes to get them there. And I just think it's really important to showcase that work. Unified basketball, we hosted the Special Olympics jamboree here at Algonquin. We had quite a few schools come and participate. And it was great to see all the different unified programs working together as a team and a family. And we had eight students participate in their national letter of intent to play collegiate athletes at a D1, D2 school. And I wanted to make sure that we captured those names. And as A.D. Mascherino says, always see you at the games. So I had to make sure I sneak that in there. I'm sure everybody's already pre-bought their tickets for Chicago. I went to one of the musical rehearsals today. The songs are infectious, it's phenomenal, it's going to be a really exciting event. Again, the rehearsals are open, you're more than welcome to attend to see them, although it's kind of a spoiler alert now because we're so close. The show is next week, you can pre-buy tickets. We have 54 students in the cast, we have 16 students in the pit and we've extended the stage. I mean, it is, it is legit. Please come and see it, it's going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal event. The orchestra pit, just like in a typical showcasing of Chicago, is now up on the stage and level. Very, very excited. Mr. Vincent cannot contain himself, it's phenomenal. I wanted to speak to guidance on the following page. We did our day for change, you heard me speak about it during the school improvement plan. We have expanded this from one class to the entire freshman class. Every single freshman participates in this annual anti-bowling program about understanding and celebrating diversity awareness. This is a part of what Algonquin does every single year, every single day. In addition to all of our freshmen participating, we had 17 student upperclassmen mentors. These are juniors and seniors that went through training and now mentor the students to make positive choices and to celebrate diversity, plus 40 additional faculty members also do this. One change we made this year with the help of the APTO is we were able to have Kevin come in that afternoon and speak to the students and then have him speak to the parents to create that connection of the conversation with what the students experienced and what the, what the parents heard. Great overlap into the home. Under library, I wanted to point out two things. Huge support for our US1 unlevelled courses, they do what's called big group activities. Hopefully you should come and see it and experience it. We take all of the four classes running that period, invite them all down to the library, they'll work with different teachers during that period, they'll have different groups, they'll work with different peers across the freshman class. They're all getting to know each other, they're creating a family, they're creating positive connections. And then they break back apart into their regular traditional classrooms. So it's great to see them come together and then break apart, really developing those collaborative skills. We also host the tiny tomahawks. They are so cute, unbiased. They come over here under student uses, child development class. Their Algonquin student is their mentor, they bring them over to the library, they practice reading books, they really empower children on the importance of reading, they sit and read with them. Really great experience on our understanding of child development for our Algonquin students in the class. Excellent experience for our students, our tiny tomahawks, our soon-to-be T-hawks, who are developing their love for reading. And on the last page, I wanted to bring our focus to the physical education and health. This is an action step that's come to fruition from last year. We spoke about how we wanted to bring some of our proactive work that our data indicated that students were taking more risks their 10th grade year, when it came to potentially trying drugs and alcohol, risky behaviors and so forth. So what we've done for the first ever, first time ever in Algonquin is we have taken the freshman class and swapped them with the sophomore health and PE class. So for a few weeks going on right now, the freshman class are not in gym class, they're in health class. And they are doing addiction, drug prevention, healthy choices, decreasing risky behaviors right now in 10th grade PE, 10th grade health. The sophomores are in gym class during that time. And that was an intentional, actionable step in answering to some of our Metro West Health data and how to be more proactive with our 10th graders and, and educate them before they're faced with some of those risky choices. So really exciting, it's been very successful, the students have reported positively out from the experience. And shout-out to our math team, placed eighth out of 85 teams in the W Invitational, our freshman team had five perfect scores. Our Harbinger continues to receive national recognition. They recently received one of the highest prestigious awards, the Newspaper Pacemaker. Ms. Cobins explains to me that not only were the only winning school in Massachusetts, but we were the only New England winning school. This is a huge testament to the work that goes on outside of the classroom for Algonquin and an additional experience for our students to compete and enjoy the things that they, that they do. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to make sure I found out when the Chicago was. I, I knew it was coming up, so I just wanted to get those.
Pre-buy, pre-buy tickets. They run fast.
Yes, and, and also the Harbinger, you know, they always were award-winning years and years, but now they just seem to be soaring, like exponentially every year. So it's great, it's great work. Okay, any other comments? Moving on to enrollments.
So in your packet is the November enrollment report, current actual enrollments, the October one enrollments and what we had projected. I think it's important to note that the enrollment percentage, the 61.73 to Northborough and 38.27 to Southborough, we haven't seen that type of percentages since fiscal year 10. So it will have an impact on the regional agreement and the apportionment.
So just as a follow-up, so we've told the, the town fathers in, in both towns that this change is coming, I mean, it's a.
We had a four-hour meeting.
It's a big hit for Northborough, right? So just, you know, from a, from an LY point of view, last year, Northborough was 59.3% of the population, this year going up to 61.7. I mean, that's an extra 2.5% of the assessment kind of coming at them as compared to prior years. It's, you know, I'm sure the Southborough folks are probably pretty happy, but, you know, that's material, right? We've not seen a change like that in a while.
So many meetings about this day.
And many more to come, I suspect.
So also in your packet is the annual NESTEC enrollment report for your review. No real surprises in terms of enrollment. And then next in your packet, you have the, the monthly general fund expenditure reports for September 30th, 2018 and October 31st, 2018. We'll need a vote to approve until audited.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
We also have the FY19 Statement of Revenue as of September 30th, 2018 and October 31st, 2018. We need a vote to approve until audited.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Passes.
We also have the FY 2020 budget priorities. We have, the school committee has not voted on these priorities yet, so we need a vote to approve tonight. And I believe the last time we met in September, there was a recommended change, which is reflected and read on the document.
Okay, so we do these. I'm looking for a motion for.
I'm moved that we approved the fiscal year 2020, Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Budget Priorities.
Moved by Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Joan. Any discussion?
So just a, just a quick one, a rehash of, of the conversation that caused this change. You know, we had talked about kind of taking away the, the, kind of the teach-to-the-test sort of thing. And yet tonight, we saw that 10% of our kids were needs improvement or failing in, in one of the two MCAS scores. I mean, it's, and that's problematic. I mean, that's bigger than it was by a fairly significant amount from the prior year. You know, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't lose sight of that, I think. I mean, we've kind of, kind of steered the words away from it, but I don't, you know, I think none of us would want to see it reflected in, in results like we saw earlier today.
I'm still happy with the change.
Yeah, I'm not happy with 10%, though. That's a, that was a big number. I was, I thought that was a big number as compared to the prior year where it was like six or something. Seems like a lot of kids. But yeah, I will truly vote for this change when it gets moved for the vote.
All right, all those in favor? It passes. Okay.
So in your packet is the FY 20 budget calendar and just a couple highlights. There will be a communication about invitation to a capital planning subcommittee meeting in the next day or two for, for the month of December. And also, December 13th is the Northborough Financial Trend Monitoring Meeting, the annual meeting that takes place in the Northborough Library. So next on the agenda is the reappointment of Assistant Treasurer. So in June, we reappointed the district treasurer, Christine Tagg, for the 18, 19 academic year. And at this time, we also need to make a motion to reappoint the Assistant Treasurer, Lynn Winter. So we need them for the 2018, 2019 school year.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, seconded by Paul. All those, any discussion?
Congratulations.
All those in favor? All right. So we have no old business, we have policy development and distribution. So we have our first readings on G160, Staff Responsible Use Policy, I200, Student Responsible Use Policy and a new one, an employee social media policy. So those are in your packet for our first reading.
Question on that? Are those the same ones we saw at the Southborough meeting?
They are, so they're, they're going to each individual school committee. And then we're going to convene the combined policy subcommittee to look at these.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or if you, if you look at it, have another chance to look at it and, you know, offer any between now and a second read?
Just one, make one comment around the employee social media policy. This was a collaborative effort between all three associations and actually they brought this to the table as something they thought was very important to move forward. So it just, I think speaks to the collaborative and partnership that we have with our associations.
Okay, so if anything comes up, just please let us know regarding any comments on those policies. And we'll have the combined, that will be scheduling. Okay, so it comes to our audience sharing portion of the meeting. Do they have any, sharing? Okay, seeing none. Now we, next is the distribution of the personality board. And our communications, distribution of the Harbinger and our award-winning newspaper. And we got the Mass General Laws, if anyone.
Just one comment about the NGL. I know many of you like to bring it home and set it on your book, case of pride. But if you are not going to use it, we have a good place for it. We usually give them to principals if they appreciate having copies.
Okay, so we have some agenda, we have approval of bills and payrolls, we'll have that. And we have agenda items for next month. We'll be reviewing the FY 20 capital plan. We'll have a preliminary discussion, budget discussion for FY 20 and the World Language Department's presentation. Any other items of interest?
Too soon to hear anything from DESE, right on that. Did we get the Harbinger? Was the Harbinger in our packets?
Will we be, we'll be getting an update on the fall athletics?
Fall athletics. Either that or, or January or something. Okay.
I know the, the forefront wouldn't would come in and just give us an update how many were in and then just leading in, especially since just hearing tonight that there's tryouts for the different ones.
And at some point, our next, next mention about, I think people would be interested in learning more about the instructional rounds. instructional rounds. Just probably as later on in the year when we've had some experience of using this initiative.
And if there'd be any kind of a small video, maybe not a taken here, but even if it's one that you showed to teachers on how it is, I think it'd be helpful if we all see what it looks like. Short, not long.
If there is one.
If there is one.
Or whatever. So whatever would explain it well to us. Okay, that's all we have. So...
Are we adjourned this meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee?
Seconded.
Seconded by Joan.
Seconded by everyone.
All those in favor? All right.